Shine on it.
Shine on it.
Shine on it.
So shine on it.
Shine on it. The whole world looks like Jesus.
I'm not a lamp under a basket. I'm not the lamp under a basket.
Uh huh.
I'm not the lamp under a basket. I will shine bright. I will shine bright.
We are not the lamps under a basket. We are not the lamps under a basket. We are not the lamps.
You will shine.
You shine in the shadows.
Shine in the shadows.
You win every battle.
Win every battle.
You shine in the shadows. You win every battle.
Shine on it, shine on it. Shine on it, shine on it. Shine on it, shine on it. You shine on it, shine on it.
Let the light shine.
Let the light shine.
Open up the window.
Open up the window.
Let the light shine.
Let the light shine.
Open up the window. Let the light shine. Open up the window. Let the light shine.
We sing. So darkness, get out of my way. So darkness, get out of my way.
Way.
So darkness, get out of my way.
Get out of my way.
So darkness. So darkness, get out of my way. 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 So darkness, get out of my way.
We draw close to you, oh God.
Fill the space with your love, God.
We draw near to your presence.
Remind us of the presence. Remind us of your presence.
We love your presence. Have your ways. Have your ways.
Remind us of your goodness.
Have your ways. You can have your ways.
Remind us of.
We draw close to you, oh Jesus. We look to you. We look to you. Yeah, just draw close to the presence of the Lord. We draw close to you. Oh, just worship him right now. Yeah.
Fill the space.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
How's everybody?
Great.
Great. Me too. Yes.
Amen.
Okay, sounds good. Pretty close to seven o'clock, three minutes after, but I think it'd be good if we just go ahead and get started so we can be close to um our actual time to get started, right? And it gives us a chance to um wrap up at our time. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna go ahead and open up and you know, we'll open up a prayer. Um, somebody want to give us an opening prayer?
Yes, dear heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord, and we thank you again for another night of fellowship, another light night of learning more of you so we can be better servants for you, God. Lord, please bless all those who are on the call tonight, the teacher, as he gives us some guidance of how we need to dive into your word tonight. Those who are working, those who are listening to this at their job, our YouTube family who are partaking with this as well, God. We ask that you bless all who are listening, but more importantly, Lord, you give us what we need to find a closer relationship with you so we can be better for you. That's the ultimate goal of what we need to be, strengthen our relationship with you. Lord, we love and honor your holy name. Continue to bless us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you. Thank you. And um, thank you, everybody. My absence taking care of things. Um, me kind of following behind my daughter playing basketball and just keep her in prayer. She's a little under the weather now. Um, but um. All right, so we've been in book of Proverbs and um before we get started in that, does anybody want to kind of go over um some of the things that's been talked about, especially last week?
Yeah.
Something somebody wanna um, you know, bring, bring out that they thought of? You can do that at this time.
Well, um, brother teacher, we, we miss you. Um, and I hope the class was okay with um our discussion last time. We had a lot of people on. Lot of lively discussion. We continued to go verse by verse, starting at um thirteen seventeen. And um, we uh, you know, kept right on going and I cut off, I think, right before um, we got to, I think about twenty-two, something like that. And I um, uh, we, uh, and so um, we, of course, going verse by verse, and you know how thick uh Proverbs is and um, and we, a lot of people were able to share their experiences, um, which was really good. And then so we, I think that we all agree that we're learning um with each other and learning from one another. And as we go through this, I've been making notes to myself about things that I can do better. And uh, and when folks have um been expressing themselves, they um, folks here on the line have been making proclamations and and uh, and sharing um really forthrightly in uh with their testimonies. They have been bold and they've been beautiful and loving. And so I probably expect no less tonight as we go through those, especially when we start talking about um, the things we need to train our children and ourselves and um, uh, you know, each, each couple of these things uh, are just powerful and a whole, maybe a whole month of lessons by themselves if we, we could step. But we've been trying to move along and we've been trying to get people out about, trying to get them out about eight fifteen so we won't stay um, you know, all night and people still be fresh for work tomorrow. If anybody else, I'll yield to somebody else who was listening while I was trying to leave.
Okay. Anybody else want to add something?
God is good.
Good thinking, man. Okay. All right. So we get started tonight and um, he said he's trying to get y'all out about eight fifteen, so I'm gonna try to get y'all eight fourteen.
Watch out, teacher.
Okay. All right, um. So if you stop that um, verse twenty-one, twenty-two, if somebody will um restart at twenty-two and read the remainder of that chapter, which would be through twenty-five.
Twenty-two.
Uh, chapter thirteen, verses twenty-two.
Okay. So. Okay, maybe at thirty.
Right here.
Twenty-two to twenty-five, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, "A good man leaveth an inheritance to his children's children, and the wealth of the sinner is laid up for the just." "How much food is in the tillage of the poor, but there is that is destroyed for want of judgment. He that spareth his rod hateth his son, but he that loveth him chasteth him be times. And the righteous eateth to the satisfying of his soul, but the belly of the wicked shall want."
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we're back up with verse twenty-two and "A good person leaves an inheritance for their children's children, uh, but a sinner's wrath is stored for the wealthy, is stored for the righteous." So um, somebody wanna um start discussion on that verse?
Uh, let's see, the inheritance part?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, um, back in the days, um, like one of my ancestors um, long, long ago um, built the uh, the house for Daniel Boone. And when they built the house, it was made for generations to pass down to that generation. So it was built sturdy to withstand the seasons and it was up to the one who inherited uh the property, so to speak, and they, they have a responsibility for the upkeep and, and uh and to make sure it's passed down to their children's children as an example.
Okay. All right, somebody else want to add something?
Well, I see this as a, as a, a piece of education for um, you hear a lot of talk these days of preparing for your legacy, supporting your kids, supporting um generational wealth. Um, you know, it's, it's not a capitalistic thing. It's not a thing that is just for uh, you know, folks who have money and want to retain property. Uh, this wisdom piece is telling us what we should be doing. Um, I, can I say that in the message Bible that says, "A good life gets passed on to the grandchildren." I, I really like that one.
Yeah.
Because when we talk about inheritance, you know, a lot of that is, you know, uh, those words is, "What am I leaving somebody?" And, and, and you know, that's true. What are you gonna leave somebody? But sometimes there's, there's this stigma that is financially gained. It's uh giving them um an edge up to be in another economic status, but even a good life is passed on to the grandchildren. Um, same thing as our grandparents left us, a praying life, how to serve God. Those things we should be doing, I see this as goes beyond just a, a, a wealth issue. That wealth uh is not only in financial gain, but it's also spiritual wealth. Uh, our relationship, uh, when we see, when we're living in a life where our grandchildren can say, "I don't have to, um, my life is not about how much money I can get. It's about how I treat people. It's how I use the money, how I, you know, getting money is part of that. You're, you're serving, you're working. You're being um prudent about things so you can uh help your children um in this world that's so capitalistic, but also how do they manage that? How do they deal with others? How do they give back to God from the gifts that are received this? So I, I see this uh go beyond a riches in uh value thing, but uh spiritual as well, um, since we are talking about God's wisdom.
And I, I agree, agree with that and, and would like to see if I can expand to because I think that the spiritual piece, um, uh, you know, I think a good name uh also is carried from one family member to the other.
Yes, yes.
A bad name can be too.
Amen.
And um, it can be, uh, sometimes it could take a, a, a bunch to, to crawl from under a bad reputation that a family has done.
Yeah.
Uh, but it doesn't take long to, to, you know, to mess up a good one.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I think that um certain family traits and habits. Um, I think that when, if we learn, if we're teaching our children to save, they learn to save. Um, if they, if, if we teach our children uh to get up in the morning, that if we're people who get up in the morning, make up our bed, um, do some physical workout, get to work. I mean, kids need to see um folks who are diligent. If we're not, if we're lazy, I think that's passed on. Um, if we're industrious, I think that's passed on. I think that if we've um, we should do um physical work and even um exercise, I believe that's passed on. I believe like reading and uh, uh, working on achieving. If you set that up as a, a family, that's why you see sometimes family and generational businesses, they like, okay. Um, at least here in Whiteville, you had families that kept businesses for generation after generation by the family name. And you were just expected, even though you may have done, do, you may go to college, you might do something, but you were expected to do something in that, in that business. It was in such a way that people's names were Taylor and Baker, you know, and, and gardener, right? Um, you know, because folks were named what they did, carpenter. And so they passed those skills on. Well, it might be athletics, it might be academics. It's just that, you know, you, you can set up a, a situation in your family to say, "We're a family that reads. We're a family that, you know, uh, are always, you know, um, uh, working to be better. Uh, we're a family that helps. Um, we're a family, you know, that um, that goes to church. You know, we, that's how I got in church because everybody in the house went to church. That was, I mean, they wouldn't even like, we'd sit down on Saturday and draw straws or flip coins. Then, you know, they, they, you know, if you was, you know, sick on Saturday, they'd give you some casserole on Saturday and like, okay. It's Sunday. You're gonna have all your stuff straight. No.
Right.
And I mean, it, it was like that. I mean, like, we, we didn't miss school. It was like, you know, you going to school today. That wasn't even like, okay, you, you had a cold. They put some Vicks vapor rub on you tonight, wrap you up tomorrow, you going to school. You gotta leave here 'cause there ain't nobody in the house gonna be here with you. And so it was a lot of resilience and stuff and, and you know, that, you know, you know, um, you know, nobody would catch us in the bed at like twelve. My, you know, ten o'clock or twelve o'clock, that kind of stuff is what, it was just a part of the family. So it, you know, that shaped, you know, like when I went off to school, there were a whole lot of things that were shaped already because of my grandfather. And, and, and so um, I, I'm thinking that, that inheritance is, if, you know, if you're inquisitive, if you are um, I mean, in, I remember that, you know, everybody is like for our church, you know, when we came up. No matter how good a speaker you were, you were gonna get up and say something in front of church. You could cry and, and say, "Mom, I'm not." You gonna get up and if, if they had to mouth it to you, if you sat up there all day, you gonna say, "Happy Easter Day." You were gonna do that. You couldn't say, "Well, I'm shy." There was nothing like that.
Right.
And you didn't have to sing to be in the choir. You know, you gonna learn this, you gonna learn these and learn the work. It, it was just something that you, you know, that we did. Um.
Right.
Right? And so that's how um the things that, a bunch of things that I do today is because I grew up watching that. You know, we were gonna have a garden and you were gonna work in it. And you could say, "I don't like tomatoes, so I ain't gonna go out there." No, I don't care. You don't like. You, you gonna find out what a hole is, you gonna find out what a rake is, you gonna find out the, you know, all of that, you gonna find out, you know, how, how many seeds to put in the hole. That's as simple as that. And, and so um, I, I thank God that that was a part of my upbringing.
Amen.
You know, that you were going, you know, there was, you know, so much television we were gonna watch and that was it. And then you gonna get, you know, you gonna get your homework out and you gonna do that before you do this.
That's right.
Um, and there was just certain things that, that my grandmother.
You mean your lesson?
That this was what we were gonna do. And that was, we just knew that. And there were some things that we don't do. You know, you don't go in the store and pick up nothing that you don't have the money for. Just, and we learned those things and then, and people, when we got ready to get jobs or got ready for interviews, there were people who knew things about our family that cut the way for me because they knew my grandmother would pay her bills. They knew my granddaddy would work. They knew my uncles would work. They knew that they would work, make a hustle on the side and work two or three jobs. They, you know, I, I did that when I was, you know, I can just remember working as early as like five or maybe a little earlier than that.
Right.
Because everything they can walk, you know, if you couldn't work in the back of, you were cleaning up the trash on the packhouse floor.
Right.
Until you were big enough to do something else. And that's a part of the inheritance that I think was important. I know it was important in my life. But as we get older and ki, and children not having the opportunity for that, I think that there's some challenges as far as diligence, um, commitment. You know, um, my grandmother could just shake your hand, shake hands, and that was it. My grandfather would say, "I'm gonna do this," and it wasn't gonna be like, you know, uh, if I can get to it. It was, if it was said, it was done. I can remember that kind of stuff. So I, I, I digress. But that um shake a lot about how I respond to things, even through college. When I left college, there were some things that I just felt like I had to do, even though I didn't do them all, all the way right. I just, you know, had to get up early, you know. I had, you know, started running then. I still run. Uh, my grandfather walked all the time. Um, you know, my, and my grandmother walked all the time. She walked everywhere she went. And so I said, you know, I still get up and roll. So, and, and it had a lot to do um with, with them.
Amen.
Okay. Somebody else want to add something?
Yes, I would. Um, although it seems as though Pastor Anderson grew up in the same house with me. But earlier today, you know, I had a conversation about, you know, this very same thing in the way of more of a um spiritual inheritance. Um, just to the fact that, you know, growing up and like my grandparents during those times, they um provided their spiritual wisdom because they, you know, they're studying of the Bible and, and, you know, going to church and of course dragging me as well, which instilled that in me to where, you know, it, it stayed with me. So growing up, I always knew that's where I should be, then that's where I needed to be. So what the conversation, you know, happened earlier today was just like, you know, as time has gone along like now, um, those types of inheritances have um either been forgotten or just pushed to the wayside because of maybe the fact that, you know, well, um, they made y'all do that growing up. I'm not gonna make my kids do that. Not realizing the way they, you know, raised us in a spiritual way. It was for our own good. It wasn't to make us feel good. Um, because like one thing, one example I want to share that Pastor Anderson brought to my attention with one of his is my grandmother made me pick chickens. I didn't want to pick no chicken. Picking the chicken and holding my nose and she was like, "You can hold your nose all you want, but you picking that chicken." It wasn't no, I couldn't get out of it. And it was no going to my mama and saying, "Grandma made me chicken. I didn't want to pick it." She was like, okay, she tell you.
None of that.
Right.
Amen.
That, of course, during that time, you know, being young, granted, I didn't want to do that, but as I got older and thankfully, you know, my mom upheld that, you know, upbringing that my grandmother and grandfather did as I lived with them during the summer, um, it helped me. And, and, and as I got older, I It helped me and 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 as I got older, I I appreciated it. And thankful that they instilled that in me and that I'm still, you know, working with that. Um, in mind and, you know, in 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 spirit. And even after I left home. Moved to DC, I would always call back and check on my grandfather. And he was still teaching me because I would tell him one time, I told him one time, I remember that. I wasn't going to work that next day because I was gonna call in sick. And he said, no, don't do that. Don't you ever, if you're not sick, don't you ever call in saying stuff like that. So he kinda gave me the, you know, the, um. Biblical and spiritual gr- background to that. But being young, I called in sick. I stayed home and I literally got sick and I could not do what I had planned in my mind to do on my, you know, the day I took off. So from that moment, I always remember that and I have always from that point have never. Called into work and said, I was sick if I'm not sick. I would say, I'm just not coming in today.
That's right.
I don't wanna be in work, just point blank period. I wasn't given no excuses at all whatsoever. So that's just one thing that, you know, I kinda hate, you know, with a lot in this generation that really didn't hold on to that type of inheritance. That they have, um, received from, you know, the older generation, so.
May I just wanna add something? That's good, good, um, dialogue here.
Yeah, I I kinda grew up in a workaholic family and and they had, um, like a lot of businesses. You know, um, like aunts and uncles, my grandfather, you know, on my mom's side. They had motels, they all had motels. I grew up in a motel. It was kinda weird, but. I was like, tester Andy, I went out at five, but probably more like eight. I mean, I had to sweep park a lot, probably keep the towels going in the hot basement. I really didn't wanna do that. I hated that. I, and for a while I hated laundry, doing laundry, you know. Because of, because of that, but I I did learn a lot, you know, they they made me, um, take out a bank account. Um, as a child and they taught me how to do change, you know, like from reservations. And, um, I I I, my dad would say, I was in the pool, he said, well, since you're in the pool. Take this, this, this rag with bleach on it and go around and wipe up all the towel, the tiles around the pool. I want them all clean. And I was like, okay. And the way I learned how to swim, he's, he would throw me in the water, he said, now swim. And I was like, oh, I was mad. I mean, some of the things I thought was terrible. You know, and I and I was a child and had to watch my brother and sister and teach them how to swim because my mom didn't know how to swim and they were running the motel. And then, um, that was like from spring till summer back then. But then when fall was in, um, we went to school and then, um, you know. We would do things around, you know, the house, the the motel, but, you know, it was a lot different than spring and summer. But we still had, always had chores to do. We always had things to do, like all the time. They were teaching me how to do things. And, um, so when I had my children, you know, I taught them how to do chores and take care of things and make things and. My, both of my boys had really good wor- work ethics and they're both supervisors. One's an electrician and one's a. Heating and air condition, um, supervisor. They they have really good jobs. And and, um, I didn't really have, go to church while we were in the motel because we were always there. But my grandfather was a preacher. So he he kinda taught me when I was with him, you know. And I had friends that lived behind the motel and they would invite me to go to church and sometimes I would go to church with them and things like. I was drawn, always drawn to go to church and wanting the things of God and, but when school was in. We would go to church then, but not, not during the motel, but, you know, in season. And, um, I learned, I learned a lot, you know.
Okay, yeah, thank you. All right. You know, wanna say, wanna, wanna add something? So in listening to what has been said and, you know, one of the things that I gather from all of this is. You know, one of the things that's been taught is integrity. It's been taught how to, um, you know, um, uh. Um, you know, how to to to, uh, basically, uh, live the best things to do. To live, to to survive, to get along, um, you know, how how, uh, we treat one another, you know, and 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 also. How we are to be to God. And that's one of the things we find, you know, especially from our older generation, you know, that here, you know, we talk about. Be dragged to church or, you know, we gotta go to church, is their integ- their their commitment. You know, their commitment when it comes to God, they were committed. And see, the one of the things that, like with, um. With with, uh, my grandmother, you know, you on on Sundays. You know, you you, the the biggest thing was you didn't earn on Sundays. So it was like that Saturday night, if you gotta get anything done. You know, you you better get it done. And so, you know, it it it, that was the thing. But what she was doing was, she was just teaching, uh, integrity, you know, commitment. If you're gonna be committed to God. Then you gotta be willing to 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 sacrifice some things for, um, you know, to 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 show that, some things that. Where you might think, well, you know, what's, why, what's different than me doing this and, you know, um, and not being able to do this? But that wasn't the principle. The principle was teaching, teaching integrity. And so when we look at this, you know, we can, you know, um. There's been parents that, you know, they left, you know, real well to their children, but it didn't make it to their children's children. So what happens is, once you teach the integrity piece. Then that's gonna, that's what's gonna carry on to, um, the next generation. And so, um, and 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 also with that is what can bring the wealth too. Okay? And so, um, here, this is observations again, you know, King Solomon, he's making these, these, these statements, these wise statements. And then he noticed here, he said, but a sinner's wealth is stored up for the righteous. So, you know, that's when you see, um, especially money that's really. Um, you know, gotten through deceit or how people misuse people and, um. And so, you know, yeah, it looks like you got wealth, but you just holding it for the righteous. And, you know, those are the things that when we trust in God and, you know, he works it out so. That although, you know, the wicked might think they got something, but now, you know, they're they're. End up having to do things to, uh, help you out and, you know, they're not really understand what's going on or what they're doing, but. You know, some of these things, uh, is is how God works, you know, um. You might think you got over on somebody, but then next thing you know, um, here, you gotta go over here and do this. Or you gotta go over there and take care of that. And what King Solomon is teaching us here is. If we're gonna be a good person, if we're gonna be righteous person, then we're gonna leave something that can continue to. Um, you know, we're gonna instill something that's, uh, um, in the heart, that's in the person. That can continue to go on and on and on. Okay? And, uh, twenty-three, a unplowed field produces food for the poor, but injustice sweeps it away. Okay? Anybody wanna start discussion on those, on those verses? Unplowed field produces food for the poor. And says, but unjustice sweep, injustice sweeps it away. Um, so, you know. When we're looking at it, this one from this, you know, from from, um, that's a message that I'm reading, not message, NIV. You know, you look at it from from that pers- um, those scripture, it kinda make me think of, you know, like whenever, uh, the farmers go out and and they they. Do harvest their crops and, you know, and they actually don't really diss it in or burn the field off. And then you start seeing, um, you know, probably like the next year, you start seeing volunteer growth. Okay? You start seeing, um, the the crop that they did for the last time is starting to volunteer to grow. Um, that kinda put me in minds of 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 something, you know, of of that sort. But now when we look over and we look at what the message says, it says bank foreclosed on farms of the four, of the poor. Or else the poor lose their shirts, um, to corrupt lawyers. So you you see, the the, um, when we start talking about the poor, the poor i- is 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 kinda tough with them. You know, because what it is with the poor, they're, um, kinda at a point where, um, um. Uh, you know, it's like, um, I will say. Uh, receiving like handouts or 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 getting, you know, the 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 cheaper things, the lesser of things. But yet you have people that's always trying to take advantage of the poor. And 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 also with the poor i- is is, um, you know, the, the the knowledge and the wisdom. Where, you know, um, someone that's, that has a little wealth that they gain, um, they use it against the poor. Um, you know, because, you know, the poor just don't have the means to to, um, get themselves out of the situation. And so when we, when we, we we look at this, you know, it, um. You know, it 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 shows a picture of from then even till now. Of how, you know, the less fortunate or, you know, the poor is being treated, even when Jesus was on the scene. You know, um, you know, one of the things that he said was, the poor you have with you all the time. Okay? Why? You know, you 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 got someone that's smart enough that when, you know, somebody that's probably poor have a chance to, you know, we would say, get on their feet. Well, they're smart enough to go and con them out of it, out of what they had, you know, um, to to take these things out from under them. And and here they end up right back in the same situation. Okay? Anybody wanna add something on that? What 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 class, what do y'all see in this?
Well, yeah, I I agree with all that's been said, um, thus far, is that, you know. The the ground, even just the ground laying there is more friendly to the poor than we are. The ground can't make up his mind and do all that kinda stuff and can't move around, but the ground sometimes supplies anyway. And we remember that, um, the, in the book of Roof. And, um, that the 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 ground, um, you know, the folks who, um, were poor were allowed to glean. And, uh, in that gleaning situation, then we've got the lineage of Jesus out of that. So we have an example right there, the good things.
Amen.
Good things come out of that, you know. And so, in in right now, even right now. Everybody's, he seems to be aligning to richness and to to, you you know, to stars and to that kind of livelihood. And are shunning those folks, you know, who are, right, who are now trying to cross the border because their borders are. Where they are, they're starving. And, uh, or, you know, the cartel, drug cartels are are killing folks in different places. And so folks are trying to escape. And trying to go to the peace. And and sometimes, uh, n- nations who have more are reluctant to share. As if we don't have enough to share. And Jesus came and gave his example of what, uh, he he came to do. And that would be for the, you know, the widows, the poor, the downtrodden. We, you know, we repeated that from Isaiah. And then every, all of his examples, it's about feeding and healing the poor and 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 and, uh, doing that type of work. And, uh, and then, um, uh, you know, he came back, Jesus came back and said, whatever you've done to the least of these. Those are the things that you are doing to me. Not impressing kings, not impressing, you know, senators or presidents and that's, that's not gonna be accounted for. Whatever you've done to the least of these, these who cannot do for themselves. So you've got, poor people are usually, I, in in, uh, the, our teacher. Eloquent alluded to this, is that a lot of times, poor people can't help themselves. Now, we'll blame them. But sometimes i- if you, and and anybody who's heard me preach for, you know, anytime, y'all heard the saying. If you see a turtle on top of a fence post, you know he has some help. He didn't fly. And everybody, if you have, if you have anything, if you're on this call, somebody help you get it. Now, and you could say, oh, I did it on my, somebody help you some kinda way.
Man, that's true.
Yeah, some teacher, somebody had a job, you might have worked that job, but they created that job. And and if you created the business, somebody was a customer. Somebody helped you.
Right.
And and so the thing is, is there, there are people who don't have those connections and and they are, you know. You know, they're they're the folks that we went out to last night, the folks who were homeless and, um, who are. Uh, or may have had some, um, you know, some, um, some bad situations happen to them. We don't know. What rendered them homeless or shelterless and that kinda thing. However, it could have been us and can be us.
That's right.
And and so, um, the the way that we show honor to God is that we love his people.
That's right.
Jesus said as much as, if you really want to impress me, if you want to do something for me. Be, um, sympathetic to these folks. Now, if the naked ground can do that, if the dirt can do that, then we ought to be able to do that. And and that's, that's where the giving process and and the loving process makes God plans work. That's, that's what I see, um, that, um, if we're going to be, um. Is the 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 problem, and you've heard me mention this before too, we never have a lack problem. We have a distribution problem.
Right, man.
And and if you took the 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 statistics for how much food is thrown away on restaurant row. On a given weekend. There should not be anybody going without food.
Absolutely.
If you ever go in a restaurant sometime, and I used to kinda go in the restaurant and see people bite off of one thing or let their children bite off, I couldn't stand it. They used to, you know, and then go back up to the bar and they bite off of one piece of chicken. I could not stand, I know I couldn't stand it, cause my grandmama would turn it over on her bread. You eat all of that off your plate before you go back up there. And if you don't, and matter of fact, if you get it, you better eat it.
That's right.
Cause your eyes are bigger than your stomach. Anybody ever been told that?
Yes.
But we have this, kinda gotten to this greed kinda piece. Um, we want the first and the best and that kinda stuff and we stop thinking about other people who don't have. And and that is not the kingdom of God.
Amen.
And so we we we, I think in America, we really have to think about that. Is that we're always trying to say, you know, we don't want these people and we don't want that person to have nothing. And I made it by my own boot- bootstraps. And and I, and I know some rich people. And them, and there's not a one of them that somebody didn't give a break to, not one. And matter of fact, they give a break to each other before they give to the person who need them.
Right about that.
That's right.
They would go, you go and you, does somebody know that you, this person or that person, oh, your money can't spend here. But, but, but the Bible to say is, I'm gonna count for you what you do for the person who can't do back to you.
Right, that's right.
Right, how do you treat the person who can't treat you back, can't give, how do you give to the person who can't return that? That shows your heart.
Right.
Absolutely.
And, and so this, I think, is supports this, these two supports that. Is that if things are, if things are just, i- it doesn't mean that this person have ten cars and other people walking, you say, good luck. That's not, that's not justice.
Amen. Amen.
Yeah, um, I wanted to add to that, because I kind of put, um, the first twenty-two and twenty-three kind of together. In, in this sense of, of following through on that, um, passive, um, passing down the inheritance. And, and still on the, it, well, I was reading twenty-three, and it just reminds me of when it says bank forecloses. On a farm of the poor, or else the poor lose their shirts to crooked lawyers. And it remind me of the saying that evils always all around you. So, so I looked at that as, you know, if we're not. We, we fail to pass on that good life to our grandchildren, then they become poor in faith. Come pouring faith and pouring, um, lack of understanding of God and his goodness, then you could fall prey to anything. Anything that Satan puts up in your path. You always feel that you're, 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 you're poor and, and spiritually poor, uh, your, your lack in the favor of God. You, you, you're, you know, you're just not worth anything. So you start to reach out for other things, especially, and, and I took it in the sense of, you know, church hopping. Um, you might not like this message, because you know, you don't like what the other one said, what the other church said to you, so you're gonna come here. And is feel good for a moment, but when the message gets real, you, you leave again. Um, that's, that, that, as, as everybody said before. You know, the values that aren't passed on leaves you open to all of these. And, and you start with, you know, like Pastor said, you don't have e- enough to do things, you being treated, um. So bad by everybody, it turns into spiritual stuff. So you start looking at the pastor wrong. Cause the pastor's saying the word, but he feels like he's talking to you. Or you don't want to go to church because you don't like what's being said, because you think your business is put out there. Um, that. Heritage goes and, and really, um, speaks volume to how you receive the word. How you serve and find the word, but also how you believe in the word and how it can transition your life.
Amen. And it also go back to, you know, when we talked verses about, uh, you know, why, why, like a wise person. Um, you know, um, they, they love rebuke. But whenever you hear that message and you feel like it's directed to you, that is conviction. Now, you got a choice on how you want to receive that conviction. Receive it and, and, and correct it, or you, you know, say, well, they throwing off on me, I'm over here in this church.
My ties, because he, he talk about me.
Yeah, and, and the thing is, is if it's a word church and they preaching the word, well, you know, God. He's gonna put that same word over there and he's gonna put that same word over there. So, you know, it'd be like Jonah, you, you, you can't even get in the middle of the ocean and hide from God. And so, you know, that's the thing here, that the word is teaching us. You know, is, is teaching us, um, these different things about how we should receive rebuke. Um, you know, and then once we receive that and we receive, um, God's righteousness is how we ought to. Conduct ourselves and handle ourselves, treat our children, treat the poor, treat our neighbors. And so, so, so basically, as we continue here in twenty-four, it says whoever spares the rod hates their children. But the one who loves their children is careful to dis- discipline them. The twen- and in the message, it says a refusal to correct is a refusal to love. Love your children by disciplining them. And so we can, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll go ahead and get this out, that don't mean that we're beating our kids down. You know, and i- it, it means that if you love your child. You know, um, and it's time for some disciplining, you know, a- and you just let it go. So if you love your child and your child is getting ready to put his finger or, you know, put something in the electrical outlet. And you don't want to discipline your child and you let him do it, you know, what good is coming out of that? So when you discipline your child, you let him know, no, that's dangerous, that, that could kill you. So it moves, that's a, that's kind of a, a, a physical, practical thing, a way of saying that. But see beyond that, you know, the other scriptures, you talk about the poor and all of this. So, e- e- even the inheritance, if you, if we don't teach our children integrity. Discipline them when they wa- fall outside of integrity, well, you know, and it's time we, they go, they do go get that bank loan. Are they gonna pay it back? You know, a- a- and, and so what happens is, that's why it says, if we don't discipline, we don't love. If we don't teach them how to go to school, sit on, listen and learn, well, what's gonna happen when they get on the job? And, and you know, and, and, and one thing that you, we do have a lot of is that the child is always right. I don't care, you know, if it's the teacher, if it's the, if it's the pastor or whatever. And the, the child, to some parents, the child is always right. And you know, the thing that I always say too is, you know, if you, if you're at school, you had to go to school for your child. And you deemed that the teacher was wrong in that situation, don't hammer that in front of your kids. Because see, that's part of disciplining your child. If your child see that you going off on the teacher, even if the teacher is wrong, then what's gonna happen? The child is gonna do their own thing continually, call my mama. So what we have to do is, we have to discipline. And, 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 and you know, and, and the discipline thing is not always easy. You know, because we, you know, love our kids, we want them to, um, have good things, we want them to feel good and, and we want all of that. But, discipline is the thing that's gonna take them beyond us.
That's right.
You know, we can't be around them all the time. Pastor, were you having something?
Yes, I, I just wanted to expand just the discussion a little bit. Is that sometimes, uh, again, you know, folks have talked about a beating in this situation. But if, that, if we remember that, um, that Psalm twenty-three. Right, it says, uh, your rod. Right, and your stat. Right? So the rod, you know, the, the, if we remember, that the rod was, was a, a guiding instrument. So the discipline may not just be, um, you know, may not be punishment, which is different than discipline. Discipline is showing a way, the right way of doing. So discipline may be, um, not, you know, spanking you. Because you didn't make up your bed. Discipline means that we at our house always make up our bed. So you've provided discipline by example.
Right.
Does that, that make sense?
Amen.
Again, this is what we train up a wi- uh, the child to wait at what?
They should go.
Should go. So the thing is, is that the discipline is, um, you know. Uh, you, you know, if we all cleaning up the kitchen, this is what we do. Um, and the thing is, the discipline is not always, you didn't clean up the kitchen. Is watch while we clean up the kitchen, let me show you how I leave the kitchen. Right, and that's discipline, that's showing how it is.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Teaching, yes.
Right, that's not sitting on our butt and getting us long switch and say, go do it, a lot of times. Like my grandfather, we go getting wood, we go and get wood together, he got one, I got, you know, I got some, he got some. That was the discipline, he was disciplining me. Wanted, look, I'm not sending you to do this all the time, I'm showing you that it's been done for you. Now doing with you. Now, you know, so I'm getting in wood, you know, I'm gonna go back out there and get some more wood, because I've been getting in wood for a minute. So it ain't nothing new. Right, and so, again, we can discipline by, a- and also, we got to understand. It's like, you know, I, I tell people when I'm helping them, like, give them examples of training, training their dogs. Now, uh, sometimes, I'd be, I, you know, I want to say training, training their children too, but we, we ain't saying that. If, you know, I used to tell, you know, I was telling my son, there were some things he could do with his dog. Because if you train that dog that way, both of y'all gonna have more fun and more freedom. If you can take your dog and your dog and you teach him how to heal, and you could take him into Lowe's or ta- take him into the place. And say, sit down and lay down, and you can go back to the ne- go to the next row and come back and that dog is still there, that's a lot of fun. If that dog is biting one of their body and jumping their, that is not a lot of fun. So, you know, you cannot turn your back, you can't, um, you know, you can't. Uh, you always have to have a choke chain on them and, and that kind of thing. But if you spend some time in this. You know, early on, then they will eventually have more freedom, right? Because of the discipline applied.
Amen.
The thing is that in, in Christianity, if we'll do the things that Christ has us to do. Those who are free in Christ are free indeed.
Amen.
The, the more of the things that we learn in church what to do, the more freedom we have out in the world.
Amen.
I just wanted to mention that, so the rod is actually a, is a chastening, is a chastening rod. And we remember that God chastens, you know, chastens, what, who, who, who he what?
And who he loved.
He loved. And so now he gets you straight so you don't get embarrassed, he gets you straight, because you gonna have, there are different places. There's some people, there, there probably some, some places that we didn't get to go. And we didn't know why we didn't get to go, because people are observing us all the time.
Yes, yes.
And that's why I used to, you know, to teach my children, hey, close your mouth, why? You know? Say thank you, say yes ma'am, yes sir, and though, and then you get invited. And you don't, or, or sometimes you get uninvited and you don't know why.
I see him bow.
Right, because of, and some things you, not only, you know, how you eating, but sometimes what you saying. And, and, and you know, um, I've, I've seen times when fo- we, you know, uh, corporate wise. Folks would invite people to go like to Pinehurst or go somewhere, and then they whisper to you, you know, my business partner said, well, that's their last time. And they don't know why they didn't get the invite. Well, but it's because somebody at the house didn't tell them how to act on the greens or. How to, eh, you know, that's what we teaching for C. You didn't know how to say thank you, um, you know, when we went in the clubhouse. Now you got some free golf, but you didn't even offer to buy no crackers, you didn't offer to buy no soul. Man, paid a hundred and fifty dollars for you to come, you didn't tip nobody.
That's the truth.
Yeah, yes. And, and, right, and so then, you know, people, and that's why people take people on, on golf outings and take you out to dinner. Because they gonna see if, now, are you gonna, uh, order everything on the menu because it's free? Or do you have the discipline to say, look, I'm gonna get a salad and I'll get this little small entree and I say thank you. Because people are watching whether or not you had any training. And they'll, and you know, I've remember several things, I, I remember one time, and I'll let you go with this, look. I got a check in, in the mail one time from my, from, back, back in the day when I first started working. At, at, um, in the company that I ended up owning. It was double my salary. And I, so I, I, I looked at, I said, whoa. And so I called payroll and I said, look, you, y'all got a problem, she said, no, no, you supposed to get, I said, nah, then I called regional director. No, I can't cash my check because it's wrong. Uh, well, go ahead and we'll square it out of there, I said, nah, I'm gonna send it back to you, you get my check straight, because I don't want nothing that you have. Right? And, you know, a couple of weeks later, uh, Charles Stevens, who was the only owner of the company, came down in his car and stuff and whatnot. And I, you know, went up the ladder and we became business partners. I still believe it had something to do with starting out with that check. Because my grandmama had told me, you don't want nothing that belonged to anybody else. So I'm thinking that, you know, it's the small things, the chastening rod is a little tap, if you ever seen it. It's a little tap, like, here you go, the rod ain't big enough to be beat nobody with anyway. It, it's a little tap to say, hey, 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 here you go, see, go this way, go this way. And, and if we, um, we all need to be doing that in church, we need to be doing it to ourselves to develop discipline. It's called self, and then you learn, that's outside discipline, but then you learn self-discipline. And the more discipline you have, the more responsibility you can take on.
Amen.
And the more people you can bless. You know, and because, um, I was able to handle one check. You know, on our, when we were larger, we had eleven hundred employees and we sent out eleven hundred checks every two weeks.
Amen.
Okay, and that's a blessing, um, and but if you can't handle two cents, now you can't handle two thousand dollars. Can't do it. And so, that's what I'm saying is that, that rod is important for the children to learn in the small places. And I say the children, that's all of us then, right, because we're children of God.
Right.
And so if, if we can't take that rod and stuff and, or we withhold that rod. It's actually a disservice to children that they can't go anywhere, they can't, you know. You, the, people are not gonna open the doors for them, and they're gonna close them, those doors when they, before they get there.
Don, Don, you, or Scott, has something?
Uh, yeah, it's me. Yeah, I think, I think what Andy was kind of getting to, and I, I get it. And it, it has to do with seeing things from God's perspective. Like the bigger picture is. You, you develop and you build your character based on, um, uh, you know, fear of God. Yeah, fear of God, you, uh, but, but the love too. And, and you see how he, you know. How he, uh, walked and how he handled situations. And, uh, and, and we're to build on that character. You know, try to emulate that, try to, you know, be peacemakers when it's time to be a peacemaker and. And follow those, uh, guidelines that he left us. And, and, uh, put it into practice. And that strengthens our character. And, uh, it shows us a bigger world and, uh, and, uh, then we see things from God's perspective instead of just our own, which, you know, we're all pretty much scrambling and learning as we go anyway. I mean, even at the age of sixty-three, we're, we're still learning. I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's an everland, uh, never-ending learning process, because there's always something new to learn. And that expands your horizon, that expands your perspective. And then you see more and more how God sees us from his perspective. And, uh, but that, that's kinda how I see it. And, and I applaud the way that Andy was, was, uh, putting it out that way.
Teach, I was listening to, uh, to Pastor Anderson, Andy Musial. And I was thinking about when he say, well, you, you invite people and they come, like we be talking about the golf. Now, like I did, I invite like seven other people to play golf and they didn't have to pay. But I'm talking about what Mr. Andrew was saying, and they didn't have to pay, but they never tip. So the young man that was working outside, when I bring my group to play where I was working at, and all of them prayed free. And my brother and a few more of them give ten dollar tip, but this one tall fella, he would give the boys two dollars, but I didn't know that. So one of them came to me and say, you know, um, JB, that tall fellow you invite, he always give us two dollars. I said, what? So when he came back the next Tuesday, he came up in his car and got his bag out. He said, um, which, um, bag caught them up? And I say, well, you have to go inside and pay. He said, what? I said, yeah, because you paid about three weeks and you giving people two dollars, you didn't pay a green fee or nothing. So now you got to pay. And it's forty-five dollars. So he took his bag and put it back in the car and left. That was good. Because he was getting away with something that he should have, you getting free. I mean, you know, be, you know, kinda be kind to people. He was kind to you. And, 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 and you know what I'm saying? It's, it's like they, they getting away with something. I think I heard, um, man, the Sunday school teacher name, uh, I think I don't remember his name, uh, he was saying, oh yeah, Vince. Vince was saying something about the same situation, how sometime people just start learning. Like I was hearing a whole lot of stuff, and yeah, about being poor. I, I really didn't, didn't know what poor was, because we had a lot of, of chickens and cows. And my father used to feed people and give them things and this and that, and then we had four rooms that we would rent to school teachers. But actually, I didn't know that I was poor, but then when I got older, I found out I was poor. Because for the simple reason is, I had to get out there and work and, and earn for myself. But that, but when I was growing up, everything was handed to me through my father, cause he would do it for me. And I didn't think, and these other people around us, it was always coming for something. My dad did never say, you know, you can't have it. At the smokehouse, he said, you know where the key at? Wanna get some eggs, chicken house, hen house over there. So we was always, my father was always give us, that's, I guess that grew up in me. You have to, you know, you have to help somebody that, that really needs some help. But some people right now, they'll see somebody need help and they won't help. They, like I heard, um, Pastor Anderson said. You know, you got a car, two or three cars and somebody walking, why don't you give them a ride to church that pass right by? I've seen it happen. But getting back to the real thing about the, the, I think if the government hadn't take, running the, the schools and everything else, kids would be better off. Like when we grew up, we, it, it was, it was rusty. You can go to the schoolhouse, cause you would get a spanking from the teacher, get home and get another. Nowadays, it's like, I heard, um, I think the teachers say you go to the schoolhouse and the mother, she wanna beat up the teacher and argue. Then the children say, well, if mama can do it, daddy can do it, I can do it. But it's, 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 what we talking about now is really, um, teaching everybody how to be a giver and help everybody else in this teaching. I love this teaching because it, it's helping me. And I thank God for the teaching, Pastor Anderson, or everybody who says something, it's really important to everybody. Somebody got something out of what everybody saying. And that's why I like to be to this, this, um, Bible study on Wednesday night, cause it's really, really help. It, it's helping me. I don't know about nobody else, but I thank God for it.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, and, 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 and this verse does say this. The way it says about, you know, love their children is careful to discipline them. So that, that, that means that, you know, you're, you're, um, where you're not driving your kids to raft, you're, you're, um, you know, you're not just, um, reacting to something. Um, and the, the twenty-five, it says the righteous eat to their hearts content, but the stomach of the wicked goes hungry. So basically, when we're trying to do, well, when we're being of the righteous. You know, we understand there's limitations. We understand that, you know, there, it, you know, we're away from gluttony. We're not caught up in the gluttony thing. Or the greed. So basically, you know, it said eat to your heart content, or you know, that could be, that could be, uh, uh, go even further than that, you know? Um, and but what it's saying is to the heart's content, or in other words, we understand how to be, um, how to be satisfied, we understand, you know, limits. And then it says, but the stomach of the wicked goes hungry is because, you know, wicked always, always trying to, you know, reach out, always trying to get more, more, more. You know, it's not so much that I need more or, uh, you know, it's just that I want it. You know, because I'm, I'm trying to, you know, uh, I'm being greedy. I just wanna. And so, you know, and, and this is the thing that, um, King Solomon is teaching us here. So, and what we're gonna do is, if anybody don't have anything else, we'll turn this over to pastor and on next week, we'll, um, you know, we'll reveal it again, maybe, and then before we move on to chapter fourteen.
Any other, um, comments about that? About that we get satisfied in righteousness? Anybody else? Okay, so we, we wanna make sure that we, um, not only, uh, just discuss these. I hope we're keeping notes and, and, and keeping notes to ourselves, how we're gonna conduct ourselves. So that we can actually leverage these into prosperity.
That's right.
It will, it will put us in places that we would never think that we have it. And some of people, if we open up for testimonies right now. We would, people right now would say, I never thought I would see some of the places I've been or got some of the things I've gotten or regardless supply, uh, because of the way I was carrying myself. Not how much, not my, how much money you had in your pocket, cause I know there's time I didn't have any money in my pocket. However, the way I was carrying myself, things were taken care of. And that'll take you further, a whole lot further than, um, than, than money in your pocket sometimes.
That's the favor of God, unmerited favor.
A- absolute. A- absolute. Uh, I, I've been invited to, and trust, I, I don't know if I told y'all, I, I was sitting at the desk one day. And the guy called me up and said, would you like to go to Europe? And I said, you know, I'm sitting at work, it's outside work. I was like, go, you did, nah. I was gonna, nah, I, I can't afford it. He said, no, it's all expense paid.
My God, that's favor.
You know, three weeks, all expense paid. Yep. And I, I went to Europe, stayed in four and five ho- star hotels. I met the leaders, I went to NATO, went to five different countries, went to Paris, went to Berlin twice. I was invited back by the president or what they called the chancellor of Germany. Uh, and all, all plane tickets, every, all meals, everything, and wanted to spend all expense paid. And it was a person who just saw a, a little thing that I was doing in white. And it, and, and so it's just, I mean, it's amazing how that can, you know, manifest if you carry yourself in a certain way. And so I thank God for my grandparents who told, told me how to, to sit down and how to, how to say yes sir, yes ma'am, how to look people in the face and how to say thank you. And I don't know which one of those pieces it was, but I know it had something to do with, with, um, Saint Mark Amysan. The first Saint Paul and, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Sadie Jones, Mr. and Mrs. Sadie and Jimmy Jones. And other people who poured into me, pastors who poured into me. You know, so, um, I thank God for this lesson. Again, I hope that we will take this lesson and, and use it and leverage it and, and, and teach our children and our grandchildren. So, um, let us call out the names of those folks that we have on our heart tonight, um, so we can have prayer.
Mother Peggy Spain.
Uh, Chris Allen.
The Williams family.
Uh, Donald Flynn.
Bobby family.
The Myers family, um, uh, Jesse Dawson family. Also the pastors, um, of the churches and, and the vision that they receive for their, their, um, congregation, but also protection for their families.
Amen.
Jenna Keel.
Amen.
Um, I have two cousins that I wanna put, um, put in the circle, um, my cousin Curtis Williams, his family, he lost his brother last week, um, somebody murdered him. And my cousin, um, his sister, um, died unexpectedly yesterday, so as my take.
Amen. Prayer for, pray for their comfort and direction.
Stent, uh, someone just killed her son in Lawrence. I think he was about twenty years old. And his name was Lorenzo, and he just, and I knew him when he was a little boy. So just pray for her. I don't know her last name, but her first name is Stent, Cynthia.
And if you don't mind, we just need to just pray for those situations, these, these folks taking out each other. They, you know, they don't know how to resolve issue without violence.
Right, absolutely.
Also, I wanna put, um, Panya Jones and family in prayer, and also, um, the Todd family in prayer.
Um, I would like to request prayer for Pastor Adele, um, Sister Wendy and their family, um, Sister Wilba. Uh, also for everyone who is affected by the fires in, um, LA. As well as for, um, North Carolina, um, residents and families who are affected by still trying to get, um, over the effects of Helene.
I'd like to add my, um, um, uh, Bob Myers for, um, continued healing and recovery. Also, uh, the Pinkney family, we had a, a loss of a family member, uh, last week.
Pastor Anderson family in the circle.
Thank you.
I'd like to pray in all the people that battling with sickness, I'd like to put them in the prayer circle. I'd like to put Louise in the prayer circle. I'd like to put Corrata. I'd like also put, uh, Gerlee for healing. And I also like to put all the Marie families in, and also leadership and all pastor. And also all the students and all the schools.
I, I, I'd like to, um, uh, put, um, uh, Pa- Pastor Adele and Wendy and, and Louise and their whole family. They, they all have the, the bug, the virus and things on, so, um, we'd like to just, um, it's been kinda beating them up there from one thing to the other, so we've just pray for strength and protection for them.
Um, also would like to add Quanisha Swinton and her family. I think all of them have been battling with the flu.
Sheila McCray, she just gave her life to the Lord. About two weeks ago.
Praise God.
Amen.
Um, I would also like to add, um, uh, families and everyone that, um, you know, we saw a little bit of it last night in the, uh, opportunity to minister. Um, but those that may be, um, experiencing or that are, those who are experiencing homelessness. Um, especially during this winter season.
And we thank, uh, when we're doing that, we thank everybody for coming out and supporting that effort. Uh, that's how churches need to come together and do, go thank God. We, we, we put them, the, uh, there, that whole, um, organization and the church and the pastor and every, all the volunteers, we put them in the prayer. Okay, let us, let us pause in prayer. Uh, Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to come together and sharing your word. We thank you for the teachers, all of the teachers. Everybody who opened their mouth, everybody who opened their ears, everybody who opened their hearts, and especially those who brought their spirits to the table. We thank you, dear God, that our classes are growing, not only in number, but in quality and in strength. Dear Lord, we just thank you, dear God, for the wisdom that we're learning. We also, dear Lord, just ask a blessing on all those names that were called, all those names that we didn't get a chance to call. Those names that are in our heart, like, um, Wood and Fullwood, I forgot the, the call out, that's in the hospital. Brother Claybrook, um, that's in, uh, that's been in and out of the hospital. We just ask a blessing over people who are in nursing homes, um, and, and rest homes. Group homes and folks who could not spend the holidays at home. Um, dear Lord, we just thank you, dear God, uh, for covering. We ask, dear Lord, that you will empower us. We ask for a special anointing that those who are on this call would get excited about the word, be ready at the drop of a hat to, to lend a helping hand to folks, dear Lord, to learn, to leverage this wisdom into greatness, not for ourselves, but for the body of Christ. Let us be empowered to go out even tonight in our household, that we'll be stronger, more diligent, dear God. Dear Lord, that, that we'll be, uh, uh, more intent on excellence in your name. Uh, so that when we're doing things and when we're doing things together, it will be so powerful, it will draw people.
Yes, Lord Jesus.
Yes, so we just thank you. That, that you're including us, dear God, as your hands and your feet. Dear God, we gotta just remember that we're your hands and your feet. We remember that, dear God, we will walk, uh, circumspectly, and that we would act more boldly. Uh, when it comes to salvation, when it comes to loving people, when it comes to open the doors of the church, dear God. Um, dear Lord, we are your emissaries. Um, dear Lord, we are your, uh, emissaries. We are your, uh, uh, designated people here on earth to tell the world about how wonderful you are.
Yes, my Jesus.
So dear God, open up our mouths. We can't be saying that we're shy. We can't say that, uh, because we have news to tell. That it was not for the Lord on our side, where would we be? So dear God, we, well, if we only have a testimony that God is good, that's a good testimony.
Yes, it is.
We could tell somebody that God is a healer.
Yes.
We ought to be able to say that. We ought to say that God is a keeper. And dear Lord, since we're able to say that, dear Lord, we say, thank you, God. Thank you for keeping us and saving us. Uh, now, dear Lord, to the one who can keep us from falling. To the one who is gonna present us faultless before the throne. We thank your son, Jesus Christ, who died on the cross and rose on the third day. So that we might have life and have it more abundant. We thank you for all those things. In Jesus's name we pray.
Amen. Hallelujah. Thank you, Lord.
Brother Teacher, we thank you so much. We thank everybody, all the folks who are on YouTube, all the folks who dialed in and everything. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Ann.
Y'all have a blessed night.
Blessings, everybody.
Stay warm and help somebody else.